We now open up the St. Lucie County School Board Work Session, August 28, 2018. We have opened up the meeting and we are going to, at this time, ask Superintendent Jett, please get started with our work session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it's kind of a slow day for everybody.
So if we're not on your line.
So what we're going to do, in all seriousness, is Helen's going to make a presentation on the, what we're doing with ELA and reading, particularly K-3, three. She's going to kind of do an abbreviated version of that and then she could come back if you want to get into the weeds or ask specific questions so that we can move it along. And then we'll do a very brief presentation on HR about recruitment and retention, where we are with this year, and that'll just take a few minutes. Go into executive session after that, which won't be long at all in Ditchell. Is that okay?
Okay.
You're late?
I'm late.
All right, let's go. Dr. Wild. And sincere wish I had voted. Wish everybody the best today and confident tonight we'll all, we can all meet in the jedy, the jedy, the jet, the, not the jedy lounge, but the jedy.
All right, good morning, everyone. Like Mr. Jett said, I know you have a lot on your mind today, so I'm just going to go very quickly. This is behind some of your heads, I apologize. This is an overview of our academic action plan for this year. And so, moving right along, our priorities for this year for curriculum and talent development office, in fact, the entire Office of Teaching and Learning, is certainly focused on ELA with a special focus on grades K through 3 this year, and we're thrilled about that. And then our next two are about increasing math proficiency and college and career readiness. To put this plan together, we worked across departments, the curriculum and talent development and school renewal departments primarily, and then we also consult with ESE, ELL, federal programs for grants and so forth. When we did our data analysis, we go deep for two reasons. One is to make adjustments needed in curriculum. So you'll see the top one there. We use the data, once it's released from the state, to help us guide our scope and sequences, all of our curriculum resources, make any changes to our unit assessments to make sure they are giving teachers the most value possible, and to our collaborative planning and learning focus. What are we going to focus on? The data helps inform that. And then the second thing we look at is using data to be able to determine our support for schools, our tiered support for schools, which schools need us the most, because we do have a limited staff, so where are we going to put the bulk of our efforts or the frequency of our efforts? Which teachers need the most support? Is there a category of teachers that need the most support? Of course, new teachers comes to mind. And where is collaborative planning and learning support most needed? So we have gone through that process in depth with the new release of all the test scores. We have some of our strategies that are for all of our academic goals, not just K-3 or ELA or math, but all goals. And one of them is, we are working with Terrence and the ITS team, along with John at the Deputy Superintendent, in creating a new coaching tool to track the time of our coaches, what, all of the coaching roles that instructional coach plays, what is getting them the most bang for their buck. So we're looking at return on investment by tracking their time. So that's in development right now, and once we finalize that, we'll come back and share that with you, because we're really excited to be able to take a closer look at where we're getting value out of coaches. We have already provided collaborative learning and planning training to every CLP facilitator in the district. So that was done during pre-planning, so they are now consistently trained to lead planning back at their school sites, every grade level, every core content subject area in high school. Those folks have all been trained. We are going to be training the principals ongoing, at principals' meetings and every opportunity we have, on what to look for in different subjects and in differentiating instruction. So when, if I'm a principal with a math background, I'm going to know exactly what to look for in ELA. We have been doing that, but we're getting more laser-focused on that each year. New to the plate is we are working with Student Services and Tracy Wilkie's department on supporting social-emotional learning efforts wherever it ties into curriculum. So we've established a good working relationship there already. And we have substantially increased our professional development hours over the summer, as you know, that was a previous presentation that we did here for the board. We are also increasing accountability for our own staff, in the same way that we're looking at doing so with instructional coaches, we're doing that within our own departments to ensure that we are putting our focus where it is most needed. We are continuing to use service requests for schools that want to ask for support, and that is in addition to the support that we're providing based on the data. We are meeting a minimum of monthly with the executive directors, the deputy superintendent, the school renewal department, curriculum and talent development, to make sure that all of our efforts are coordinated. They can help us monitor and we can help them implement. So it's a, it's a great partnership there in getting things done academically. We do continue to seek grant opportunities to provide curriculum and PD, as you know, we've been very successful in that arena. And we are continuing to seek meaningful teacher feedback.
Helen, go back to that slide real quick.
Sure.
I just want to make a point for the board. On the accountability, I think it's real important, because the accountability is on the school centers themselves, but the accountability is also on us in the building that support the school centers. Everybody needs to feel that. It doesn't feel good sometimes, and then it's great when you have the rewards and you show the improvement. But sometimes there could be a perception that, well, I go to work at the district office, then I'm not, I'm not as accountable as I would be as the third-grade teacher in Troy, Minnesota Elementary School. And so we, we want to make sure the staff here, not in a get-your-fear thing, but that the expectation here is that we're serving the school centers. If the third-grade scores go down, my first reaction is, what did I do not support you? What could I have done better? And everybody has to feel that. And so that's something that Helen Corwell has done with her team this summer, because we can go down and say, well, this, this group supported this school, that group supported that school, was it the support, was it? No, whatever it was, we want to get down to the buck, to the root cause of it, and then, and then adjust whatever we have to adjust. So we all want to feel, I say all that to say, we all want to feel the same amount of accountability in the building.
And that what can I do better is exactly what we're talking about. Just like we don't want our teachers to say, I taught them, but they didn't get it. We're, we're not accepting, well, I went out and supported them, but it didn't work. So it's, it's always what can we do better to make sure that we're getting the curriculum resources used appropriately. These are just examples of how we're going to collect feedback from teachers and track the curriculum department, I'm going to move through that. We are putting a major focus this year on third-grade literacy. Not that it hasn't always been a focus, but we are switching some of the emphasis down to K-1 and 2. We know that we have to focus on foundational skills, so we are making a very focused effort to do that. We are making sure that everyone understands that reading instruction must be explicit, systematic, and multisensory. We're looking for sustained improvements, using research-based, evidence-based strategies where we're looking to see improvements every single year. Some of what we're putting into effect this year is certainly in kindergarten 1 and 2, so we know it's going to take time to start impacting third grade, so in the meantime, we're also focused on third grade. But we know this, this focus is going to take us all the way through, through 12th grade. This is just some of the third-grade data analysis, I will skip through it, but just to show you that we broke it down by cluster. Unfortunately, it's not reported by standards, so the best we can do is look at it by cluster. We know what standards are in each cluster. That helps us know what to target. So we looked at what went up, what went down, what was our highest, what was our lowest, to be able to make adjustments to our materials. For third-grade strategies, I know you've already heard about the biggest one, but the biggest one is that we just adopted a district-wide phonics program for grades K-1 and 2. We have completed all of the training of all of our K-1 and 2 classroom teachers. Here this week, we have ESE teachers, student support teachers, and some coaches also being trained. And this program has been extremely well-received, very explicit for teachers, whether or not they had training in phonics, they are finding this one very accessible to them, very engaging for their students. So that is being implemented now, it has started. In addition to that, we are sending our teams out to do collaborative planning with all grade levels, but we are starting with third-grade teams. So district-wide, we are supporting third-grade collaborative planning to get the year started. We are doing literacy continuum training for all of our K-5s that have LLI. All of these things here are about teaching teachers how to recognize reading behaviors that will help students achieve. I'm not going to go through all of those, but another big one is that we are offering full reading endorsements now, for free, for all of our teachers. That is a, a big change for us, and we are prioritizing and encouraging third-grade teachers to enroll in those. In the future, teachers will be ineligible to teach summer school if they don't have a full reading endorsement, so we're doing a big push for that right now. We're working with principals to make sure that they are monitoring grades K-1 and 2 and assigning great teachers to those grade levels, and we're also making sure that coaches are serving those grade levels. These are things, it says already shared, because these are things that we had already done prior to the data and released in the spring, and they are updates to the ELA integrated literacy units for this year, based on feedback and based on our constant analysis of unit assessment data. We have shared all that with the administrators and the teachers. These are, this is a collection of updates that were made in the third, third-grade scope and sequence and all of the curriculum resources, so that it takes it right down to understanding the specifics of ELA for the teachers and making sure that they have everything at their fingertips that they need and that they understand those resources. We did get new text sets for social studies last year and science this year, and now those have been integrated into the ELA, because we know that in third grade, students are beginning to be tested on their ability to use this type of informational text, so we've integrated that into all of our curriculum resources. ELA strategies in general, we continue to work on, update curriculum resources constantly. We are focusing our support to teachers on writing goals. This year, the state did release individual student scores on writing, giving us a great opportunity to see exactly how they're scoring the writing portion of the ELA FSA, and so now we can be very, very specific with every single school. So if they had a lot of students getting a 6, we know exactly how to get them to an 8. And so that's very targeted by school, by student. We've given teachers unit assessment blueprints, so they totally understand the, the unit assessments. We've made some changes to them to make sure that the tested areas are balanced in the same way. A lot of this is just a repeat, and that was it for ELA. For math, if there's, I'll just keep going if that's okay. For math, we are doing standards-based quarterly boot camps. We have updated all of our resources. We are also developing online and in-person workshops and resources on hard-to-teach standards within math, based on our data, which standards our students struggling with, and possibly which standards our teachers struggling with, and we're providing additional support there. We're working with the executive directors to monitor scheduling so that students do take the right sequence of courses, because as we know, our goal is to get students to algebra in eighth grade, so making sure that our sequence of courses is perfect along the way. We have now developed resources for liberal arts math. That is a high school course that is not tested, but it does support algebra success later on. So for ninth graders that start in liberal arts math, they now have unit assessments and the teachers now have scope and sequences. We have revised algebra and geometry unit assessments, so that teachers can see exactly where the students went wrong. So that was just changing the level of difficulty on some of the questions in algebra and geometry. We are reaching out to school administration to make sure we have a real tight working relationship with them. I skipped an important one. We want to make sure that we are monitoring the use of Algebra Nation. That is an excellent resource that we have as a district. We know that it yields results, so we want to make sure our teachers are using it. So we are monitoring that now. Moving on to science, we did do a new textbook adoption. We are also doing the hard-to-teach standard resources. We have now implemented the use of Khan Academy. Khan Academy has an excellent resource now, specifically for biology, and we are going to make sure that our teachers are using that as well. All of the same things that I just mentioned with the blueprints we're doing for these subjects. We're also doing collaborative planning with our science teachers and providing tiered support for science. Same thing goes for social studies, they have an excellent resource for US history now, and we are assigning the use of that and monitoring it. We developed the same type of PD for them. We're fully utilizing our Canvas program for blended learning, creating toolboxes for teachers, and providing that tiered support and that strategic, the collaborative planning For our college and career readiness, we continue to work toward increased scores on SAT. We know that is a test that a lot of our students use to graduate. Despite increasing participation in it, we are still seeing increases in our scores, and we want to keep that going. Increased performance on AP, increased enrollment in honors and college-level courses, and the executive directors are really working hard in that arena. And we are increasing the percentage of our students that complete their full CTE program as well as earn an industry certification. We are helping schools, making sure that they are linking to Khan Academy. We are implementing PSAT 8 and 9, new this year. Those tests are now completely aligned to the 10th grade PSAT and to the SAT. So students will now have tutorials and resources available starting in eighth grade to help them prepare for their SAT. So that will not only increase scores, it'll increase the number of students that earn national merit and so forth at the high end. We are requiring and monitor attendance at all college board training, because we have that wonderful partnership. And let's see, we are continuing our SAT School Day, implementing spring board curriculum in middle grades, and now we are also implementing the Cambridge curriculum and our three new magnet schools. And we are continuing our very successful college fair and our HBCU-HSI fair. Within the CTE department, we are improving our systems for monitoring enrollment and performance. That is an ongoing effort, because there's so many third-party vendors that we work with on industry certifications, and we're really pushing those folks to create systems that allow us to monitor, in much the same way we monitor everything that deputy, our Deputy Superintendent has worked on with the Leadership Dashboard. We are now utilizing any accommodations that are available for industry certifications for our ELL students. We have just added a dual enrollment agreement with FAU for Westwood specifically, and we are continuing the use of Naviance. And that is an awesome tool. I was at a school just the other day and saw a student really getting into how Naviance can help them. So that's a great program. School renewal is our department, our very small department, that is really dedicated to our most struggling schools. So they work with our DA schools. They are a very flexible team, they go wherever the data shows that they are needed. They were very active in Weatherby last year, and they're continuing those models to make systemic change in our DA schools. So their main two schools this year will be CA Moore and St. Lucie Elementary, but they are currently conducting their walkthroughs at all of our schools that have ever been in DA status, and they continue to support those schools as well. So they take a very systemic approach. We make sure that if they are there, that the rest of our team is in other schools, unless they call us in and need us there. So we're trying not to duplicate efforts. Our ongoing work, we are working right now for collaborative planning, that's really what we're doing right now, is getting into the schools and working with those folks, meeting regularly with cabinet and executive directors, working on that coaching tool that I mentioned, and really just now, we are off and running, beginning our school-based, job-embedded support to schools. That is it. Any questions?
Madam Chair. How many of our schools have BPK?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Does this include, because when I look at BPK, I look at academic, I look at the social-emotional, how important it is to prepare for that kindergarten experience?
Yes. Can you repeat the question now? And I, sorry, seventeen classrooms, thirteen schools, go ahead.
Thirteen schools, okay. Because, does this encompass BPK too, or it starts at kindergarten? The real focus, the laser focus that you're doing is?
BPK is encompassed, because Mary Hofstadter is part of this team that worked on this, so we are trying to make that seamless. And that does include social-emotional learning as well. I was with Tracy yesterday, and we talked about BPK.
To capture the kids coming in, because it's their first school experience.
Absolutely.
And we know, we've seen empirical evidence that shows students that have experienced BPK against the students that haven't had that, because they come in as babies. And, you know, as my daughter who taught kindergarten said, I'm still potty-training when they start kindergarten. So our hope was that BPK would really prepare the children to work.
Yeah, and one of our efforts there as well is to try to do a better job at monitoring and tracking that. It's challenging, because the students don't come in, we don't have a way of identifying which schools they went to, but with the new state uniform number, we should be able to really hone in on that, to measure that.
If I may, Madam Chair, regarding BPK even readiness, we finally now have permission to do private projects in quality, which we've been asking for, for kind of like forever. So we actually have that, and we should be able to track back to the individual site.
Yes.
And so we should have better numbers in the future, if they get their system up and running.
Right.
Right. Now, we spent eight years with Ellis, which never did work, so now they rolled it out, decommissioned the other one, but the new one doesn't quite work yet, so everything's back to paper and pencil. We hope that it's a very short term before they kind of get their act together, or unless it terrates up the Tallahassee and fix it. But we, we hope that gives really good numbers. We're also working with TICs and TEES to do more training within the centers on the social-emotional piece, and we actually have money to facilitate more trainers, what we don't have is people who are willing to go into that field right now. So the early coalition is working on trying to get more people interested in going into that field.
Any other questions?
I want to thank Dr. Wild and her team, they, they worked very hard in the summer. We know, you know, we know what our needs are, and we'll need to work on it. So they, we put together a nice plan and a lot of training's going on, we know that that's important, and collaborate, collaborate, elaborate teams at the school centers, the best PD that the teachers receive, so very ambitious, but doable, and again, if you need, if you need, when you're out to the different groups, if you need Helen to come in or anybody to come in and talk to those groups about what to do.
That was a great presentation, Dr. Wild. I appreciate what you have shown, not only us, but our community as well, and very thankful that we have a media center that can get this into the homes and, and help people, parents and community, understand that we are very focused in what we are doing, and at third-grade level now, we have zoomed in on it, and we are extremely focused, and people need to see that. So thank you for the presentation, and the work.
I have one more question, excuse me, Dr. Wild. And I know Bill is here, and I have a question, that it keeps coming out with providers with BPK, do we get accommodations in the school system for children that have an IEP that, because in the private sector, when they do the testing, there are no accommodations in the testing?
What, what we're doing?
Okay. Because I'm just curious, because all our children, the BPK children are tested, well, sometimes they are, sometimes, depending on what department of education are we on the side, but that has been a stumbling block for centers that accept children with an IEP or special need or English language learners, we're not given any, anything at all. And so it's a hard test that is just given, and we're just given that number.
Your question is, are we doing that in?
Why, in the public school system? We are giving it.
When they have an IEP, when they come into the public school, if you develop an IEP for them, it does include whatever accommodations they need?
But not in private sector.
Not in private sector.
Which that seems to be a disconnect.
It's, it's, if I may, Madam Chair, it is a significant disconnect, and the hands of early and early coalitions across the state have been actually tied, especially when it comes to the for-profit centers. So we have had multiple conversations with Office of Early Learning regarding that there needs to be one set of standards that everybody follows, whether you're in private or you're public, and we are working closer to that, and hopefully we will get things pulled together, I don't know, soon, but I don't, I wouldn't count on it too much. There's a lobby against that happen, because the concern is it may impact their profit margin, is actually what the state wants. So, but it is, it is a concern that we need to make sure that there is a pathway that is consistent when they come out of a privately run school or one of our departments. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm just going to share with you kind of an HR update, going to move quick. Also want to wish our board members that are, that are running for reelection, good luck, you have a wonderful board. I did vote this morning when I saw your husband Kenny this morning.
Oh.
Yes, I did stop and talk to Kenny. So anyway, I'm going to go ahead and get started. We have nine slides, and I've got 45 minutes, just kidding. And we'll go through. So, that's a joke, that's a joke. So, anyway, last year, last year, we, basically, by seventeen people, I just want you to understand, I mean, how busy HR is, seventeen people turned a lever, flipped a switch 46,618 times on applications during the last year. Between December and July, we had 36,658 touches of applications. So when you talk about, you know, those seventeen folks, they do stay very, very busy. Now, if I'm a principal, or if I'm in the district, right now, we have 3,967 applicants that we can pull from, so when I have a vacancy, I can go and look and see who has open applications, and I can go and call and contact those folks to get them in, to interview, and hopefully get them employed. The next slide addresses our sub-fill rate, and that's something we've been emphasizing last year. If you remember, we raised that rate for our green zone folks. And right now, I just want to orient you to the fill rate, the national average is 77 percent. We're doing an outstanding job. Our fill rate for St. Lucie Public Schools is currently 80 percent. And then you can also see at the high school level, we're 3 percent higher than the national average. K-8s and middle, we're at the national average, and then at elementary school, we are at the national average. But we are doing a great job with our substitutes and getting those folks in to cover our teachers when they are missing. Wanted to share with you the retention and teacher separations. So the national average, and it's, it's in red, the national retention rate is 84 percent per school districts. That means at the end of the year, you hold on to 84 percent of your, of your instructional staff. Our retention rate is not, is 87 percent. I'd like to share with you, though, 5 percent of those folks, okay, that we don't retain are due to certification issues. Florida has some of the most rigorous certification standards in the United States, and a lot of our teachers simply just can't pass that general knowledge test. So if we included those folks and were able to retain those folks, our retention rate would be 92 percent, which is almost 10 percent higher than the national average. So we've really created a system where we're holding on to our own people and doing a great job in supporting even those folks that can't pass the general knowledge test. We're doing a great job of supporting them via tutoring, getting them in to try to support them, to provide them all the support they need to try to pass that test, but it's still a challenge. Now, the next slide shows also separation reasons. Most of the people that leave are employed, 36 percent are because their contract expired, and that includes those people that can't pass the general knowledge test, okay? So whenever I say contract expired, that means they couldn't get recertified, okay, so they're no longer with us. That could also include a couple of people, we don't do it a lot, but we have non-reappointed people, and that, that counts there as well. The second reason is personal reasons. We do have folks conduct a survey when they do get separated from us. I did have some more slides, I can always come back and share, you know, some updates when we have more time. But we do have folks, they do complete surveys. When they don't complete surveys, we actually call them and do a survey over the phone, because we want to know why folks are leaving our employ, employed. And then 14 percent of those separations were retirements. So we do a very good job, and I'm going to share with you in just a moment, our recruiting efforts, because Patty Galloway is in charge of our retentment and recruitment, and we've gone out to other states, we've gone out to Pennsylvania, New York, Michigan, Georgia, you name it, we're going there, also in Florida. Now, in 2017-18, we issued 13 pre-contract, I'm sorry, 42 pre-contract binders and 13 P-. people from out of St. Lucie Public Schools came for those pre-contract binders, and that's right there. You can see in 1819, we actually issued 72 pre-contract binders, and 30 of those folks came and worked for St. Lucie Public Schools. And actually, 12 of them ended up in the green zone. They're in the green zone right now. And then 18 of them are in other zones. So we really emphasized in our pre-contract binders, getting those folks into our green zone schools. So I just want to commend HR once again for going out, recruiting these folks, and we've got 30 teachers from outside, many of them outside of our state that are here in St. Lucie Public Schools. This shows you the outstanding job we've done with filling our vacancies. And the line graph represents the last four years. Now, what we've done, as you can see, back in 1516, four years ago, we had about 260 teaching vacancies, okay, starting in June that we had to fill, okay? That's pretty late in the game to have all those vacancies. We actually moved up our hiring season, so whenever we hit June, we literally only had about 100 teaching vacancies, which makes that a whole lot doable. That's almost a 250% increase or decrease in the number of instructional vacancies we had when we hit the summer to where we started the year off with literally no vacancies in our classrooms, and everybody had somebody reporting to that class to be in front of those kids this year. So we've done an outstanding job with that in the last four years. We've hired, by May 8, this is pretty impressive, before the summer even starts, we'd already hired 195 folks for the 1819 school year. So we hired or processed 1,195 folks. 333 of those were teachers, 288 were support staff, 137 were substitutes, but we also hired 437 people for summer school. And those contacts are the, the number of times one of those 17 people in HR had to flip a switch, turn a dial, make sure those folks were ready to go. And you can see each, each of the applicants that we have has to be touched multiple times by somebody in HR. And this is our last slide, just wanted to hit it real quick. So the initiatives that we've got going on, we've, we've got a lot of rigor. Why do those applications have to be touched so many times? Because we've got a lot of legislative requirements, and we need to make sure that the folks that we're putting in front of our kids are clear, they've had background checks, they've had their drug screening, and that they are qualified to be in front of our children. System enhancements to our evaluation system. We're currently the second year of eye observation, which means all of our instructional staff, even our district leadership, it's all an electronic portal now. There's no paper and pencil. It makes things far more efficient. Improved leave processes, we've streamlined that to make that faster. Digital employee relations database, whenever there's any issues that come up at our school, all of our principals, that's all digital now. They input that in our system so that we can investigate it. Conference and recruitment plan includes fairs, visits, advertising. We've talked about geo-fencing, public records marketing. That's why we've, you know, almost have 100% start the year out with our instructional vacancies because we've been so aggressive with our recruitment plan. Job-specific testing implementation, this is interesting, you might not know it, but when we have specific job requirements for employees, we actually have a company that makes sure that they can actually do the fundamental requirements of that job. And if they can't, we steer them into a job that they can do so that we provide that support as well. Implementation of centralized income verification, the digitation of personnel files is happening now, where all of our records and our personnel files are being scanned and digitized so that whenever we have requests, public information requests, legal requests, we can simply do a quick search and poof, we've got it right there. And also increased customer service. We're very proud of the customer service improvements. Our principals, especially, and our administrators, whenever we do our surveys, HR has gone from one of the lowest rated to one of the highest. So we're very, very pleased about that. With that, I'm dropping the mic unless I have any questions.
I do have a question on the certification process for the teachers. You mentioned tutoring that's being given. Can you explain a little bit more detail of how we're going about tutoring?
Well, yes, ma'am. We identify those teachers, and there's a schedule that goes out, and that's through Denise Rodriguez, Dr. Rodriguez in talent development. And we provide that multiple nights. We encourage our principals. The principals get a list of folks that their certification is expiring, they have to pass a general knowledge test, or they have to pass a specific test. Those principals then meet. We were very aggressive. Every month, they get a file with a list of the folks, what they need, and also a schedule. And I encourage the principals in those meetings to meet with that staff member one-on-one. If they need support, then here's the schedule. You can go get tutoring, somebody will work with you, and we do that throughout the year. And we've also lowered that gap in the number of people that can't pass that test significantly, but it's still a challenge.
We also do three different types. We do online, face-to-face, using our own teachers, as well as a consultant that has a very high success rate. So we attack it three different ways, depending on the person's learning style and time availability.
Ma'am Chair, may I ask, do we still have a disconnect between the colleges of education and the certification process at DOE?
I'm going to address that to Patty. Do you want to answer that one?
I think they're working very hard as well, all the colleges and universities. You know, whenever there are statewide changes, it takes a little time to catch up, but everyone's working simultaneously to bridge that gap.
Madam Chair. Dr. President, I don't know if you know this or are aware, or if Dr. Roberts would know, but I have had phone calls of parents finding out that the teachers in the charter schools are not certified, and we ultimately have to care for these children. They're our responsibility. I've become very agitated finding out that there are teachers, not only that don't have four-year degrees, and this is what has been said to me by parents, in the charter schools, but they are not certified teachers. And if that is true, and I understand they have their separate board, but ultimately, myself as a board member, I'm responsible for every child in every charter school. And I would, I would burden us with the fact, we need to be doing some fact-finding, and we need to get in touch with DOE. And if there is a separate, I know they have a separate board, but I'm responsible, and I take that very personally. We are all carrying this burden for the charter schools as well as our schools. So if we could find that out and find out how we go about that, because the one parent was quite upset.
Okay, we can get that information.
If I may, that is an issue. Last year, one of the parents told me that her child had no certified teacher in math or science in his whole ninth grade year at charter school. I want to know what I could do about it, and of course, I really can't do anything about it, but that is a concern. Of course, there is, there is an alternative if they have concern about their certification of their teachers, they have a choice. But I don't know how much authority we actually have. If that is a concern, it came to her with, it's come to me, it's probably come to all of us at one point, that they are, at times, they'll show that they're using permanent, they're using subs, that they become the subs for the whole year or whatever that might be, and they don't reach out to find a qualified teacher.
Well, we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to provide them an option with a certified teacher.
Yes, correct.
We also know we are responsible. This is, this is, I feel like it's a burden for me because I know they have a separate board, but don't we all answer the Department of Education regardless of, you know, we should be all answering, go by different.
Different rules. Childish school, so that's my sense of.
We can look, because we have to send out a notification to parents every year about teachers that are out of field, teachers that are non-certified. We can check to see if that's something that charter schools are required to do. If it is, then I'm sure there's some documentation someplace out there. There are also, we just finished an audit, and I know that they were in the charter school line. Then I'll talk to you in private about that. But anyway, we'll follow up with that to see if that, if there is a statewide report that's available to have. I just don't know whether they're required to do that as we are required to do that. That notification is, and they can start there.
It used to be what they are now, and now we don't know. And then Chair, may I ask, do we have a list of the states for which our state has an agreement that we accept their certification for teachers?
Do we, Patty? Do we have a list of the states we have an agreement with that we accept their certification?
Yes, reciprocally, yes, we do, and it's most states.
Most states now?
Yes.
Because years ago, it was no states, and that's been an ongoing project for 20 years to make sure that if they graduate from Michigan, they're credentialed, that they can also be credentialed in Florida. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. President.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, we'll go directly to our executive session.
Any more questions for? This time?